Good evening, welcome to the Cascade Township Planning Commission. I'm going to call the meeting to order for Monday, September 11th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Going to record attendance. We have Member Richardson and Member Rissy who are excused. At this time, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you please stand and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, it is. So we'll move to Article Three, approve the current agenda. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Member Engle, supported by our Vice Chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Go to Article Four, disclose any conflict of interest. Does any member wish to disclose a conflict of interest? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Article Five, approve the minutes of August 21st. I was not here, so I'll stay.
Then we'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the August 21st, 2023 meeting.
So makes a motion. A Member Bruno supports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Move on to Article Six, acknowledge visitors wishing to speak. Before I do this, if you are here for anything where we have a public hearing, which is, I believe, everything that we have in front of us, I'd ask that you wait until we have that called. So if you're here for, say, wormies, which I suspect most of you are. In fact, I'm interested, could you raise your hand if you're here for the wormies matter?
Yeah, can you turn it up a little bit?
I can yell. I don't know.
I think you speak louder.
I can speak louder. How's that? Alright, my apologies. I purposely put the other two motions first, just to get those folks their fences. I don't expect them to take terribly long. And I didn't want them to have to wait through. We want to make sure we give everybody an opportunity to talk. So bear with us. We'll get through these pretty quick. Do we have any visitors that wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda tonight? Feel free to come forward. I'd ask that you state your name and address for the record. And we're going to limit everybody to three minutes tonight.
Three minutes, okay.
Member Secretary.
Okay, my name is Kenneth Carey. I live at 2929 Zon Apple River Drive and enjoying property 2923. Back in 2017, a gentleman put a presentation in front of the board. And that had to do with the Michigan Redevelopment Ready Corporation and Division of Michigan.org. And he was inquiring to the board on why there really wasn't a village in Cascade. I mean, we have the 28th Street Corridor. And he didn't understand why there isn't more of a village feel here in Cascade. Well, I've been on my current property for 46 years now, and my dad was an engineer. He always knew that this was going to be the place where if there was going to be a village, it was going to be there. Last Tassel Park came in and right now, you've got a lot of homes in the area that have just been rebuilt, some that are going to just start getting rebuilt. The gentleman said that the township had to go through a certification process, the redevelopment ready, in order to get approval through the state and help from the state. And I know they started it. I don't believe they finished it, but the property that I'm on right now, I'm getting a lot of interest in by local wealthy landowners and business owners in the community. And I've had inquiries the past four years, really. I don't know if any of you are aware of Mr. Jim Azar, or if any of you know him, but Jim's been after my property for quite a while, and there's been quite a few other people. Jim seems to think that it's not going to happen in my lifetime. He bought the property next to my property, and he agrees that someday that the Village of Cascade, they'll have a village there. If there's going to be one, the state of Michigan agrees that it should be there. I've been holding out because I've been wanting to be a part of it for years. And I've had inquiries from my property on 2923 falls into a transitional use clause in the charter, in our I don't know what it's part of their charter, I guess. Chapter 17 has a so one of my properties can go from its current residential zoning to a transitional use into office. I'm gonna, in the coming weeks, pursue a zoning change, and I don't really know what procedures I have to go through or where I start, but I just thought I'd come here and let everybody, give everybody a little background. Because some of the people that have been trying to get my property, had they get it, had they gotten the property, it would have stifled further development. I had a photographer that wanted to build a studio there. Well, photographers build warehouses.
So we're at three minutes. And so first of all, thank you so much for coming in.
Right.
Start with Brian.
Okay, I will. I will. But I thought I'd at least run it by you guys, so you have a little bit of background on it, but
I'm fortunate to be the longest-serving member here, and I've heard you come before us before, and it's very intriguing. So please, please start with Brian. He can help you with the zoning side, okay?
Okay, I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, sir. Okay, do we have any other visitors that wish to speak on a non-agenda item? Do we have anybody on Zoom? No. Okay. I'm going to move forward to Case Number, Article Seven, Case Number 23-3786. Deppi? Did I say it right?
She said it right.
Alright.
Alright, we have Julie Adine Deppi here tonight. They're on 1878 Country Brook Drive. This is east of Butrick, just north of Bolt area. They are applying for a special use permit because they need an eight-foot fence in their backyard. They have a large collection and variety of hostas in their back garden, and they are being eaten by the deer. So they are looking to install an eight-foot fence to prevent deer from getting into their garden area. The proposed design of the fence is to be dark black, indicated in their application, and it's supposed to blend in with the wooded area that it will be in, in their backyard. It's a pretty wooded area with a steep grade that goes off the back garden down by a ravine. And so this is why they're saying a six-foot fence, which is our zoning's current by right height maximum. A six-foot fence, they are saying, will not suffice for that reason because of the grade. The deer would be able to jump over that fence because of the hill next to it. And they did supply some pictures of their hostas. On the site plan, you can see the area that the fence will be located. I can slide it in here. Now, let's get north the right way. So they are looking to have this fence. They indicated in their description the distances that it will go, but essentially, it will not be their entire perimeter of their parcel, but just around that garden area in their backyard and still keeping the wooded area towards the furthest east on their lot, not fenced. So in considering our different factors, we did not see that this would impact neighbors in a negative way. We actually received letters from both of their neighbors saying that they would support it. I did get another call just asking about it, but they did not see an issue from another neighbor. The opacity of the fence has not been indicated, so I couldn't really comment on the light and ventilation from adjoining properties being impacted, but I didn't see this to be a large issue. And because the fence is in the backyard, then it wouldn't create a traffic hazard of any sort. And there's no known restrictions on their property that would prevent them from applying for or installing an eight-foot fence. Previously, the township has granted permission to Boss Greenhouse for the same reason, an eight-foot fence to keep deer out. So when taking all this into consideration, I was comfortable recommending that you guys would approve this application. I did add on that you may want to consider if you want to put a condition on how much light goes through the fence, if you wanted a certain transparency. But beyond that, I would recommend approval.
Awesome. There's nothing worse than hostas being eaten by deer. Do we have any questions for Madison? Awesome. Do we want to bring the applicant forward? We can ask what opacity the fence has? Would you mind coming forward real quick?
I'd be glad to. I'd be glad to talk about hosting too.
Looks like you have a lot, or at least you did.
Well, Grand Rapids is kind of becoming a headquarters. We have two guys who are doing hybridizing, and they're both getting eight-foot fences on nine-mile road, and they're attracting a lot of attention. We've been on the tours for years, national tour even, Great Lakes Tour, we had five states, come to Ada, they enjoy Ada. And we've had Michigan Tour, the West Michigan, but this year, we've had a camp, we were going to be on the local tour. We were having people from Indiana, from Minnesota, from Ohio come. We had to cancel all that. And so that has been sad for us. So, and I know you're working with a deer, so we've hit two deer. My next-door neighbor, he told me he spent $20,000 on cars the last two years. So I'm just afraid someone is going to lose their life over the deer. So anything you can do to reduce the deer population in our area, it would be wonderful.
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead, Member Moxley.
What kind of fence are you talking about? Chain link?
Yeah, chain link fence back there, I think.
Black.
Yeah, yeah, just a chain link fence back there. And along the side, we probably put a six-foot fence, truthfully, between the two driveways with awards next door. It's just the forest like it is in the back. On the other one, on the other side with Noah, Noah, it was all forest, but he got so intrigued by our garden that he's cleared off his area, but there's still a whole group of trees running through that area as well. So it's very wooded by us.
Yeah, well, I sympathize for you because we have the exact same problem, but our HOA does not allow fences in our neighborhood, so no more hostas.
Right, yeah. Well, we talked about electric fences, but we've decided against that, so.
Yeah. Okay, Member Bruno.
Again, I have the exact same problem. I do have a fence, I have a six-foot fence, and I every day watch them wiggle their nose and jump over it. So six-foot is not going to solve your problem.
That makes me worry about ourselves. Side, it's our forest. Yeah, so we're eight feet there, but whatever, I just, with the stuff coming down in the back, we need it there, or it'd be like a four-foot fence.
Yeah, that was my question. Well, I'm not sure if you have the ravine, the six becomes four, so I'm not sure. Your eight becomes six. But then my next question is, as you've raised, we have car accidents, we have everyone with the same problem. I'm just afraid of the precedent. I really don't want to drive around Cascade and have it look like the state penitentiary. If we start erecting eight-foot fences to keep deer from eating stuff, we're going to have a lot of fences. Or do we have the wrong solution to the problem? I mean, are you going to come back next year and say they're eating your front yard and want one in the front yard? That's my concern. I have the exact same problem. So I have great empathy. I'm just not sure that's the right solution or the right precedent. Can you comment on that? What's your thoughts? I mean, do you want your neighbors to all start erecting eight-foot fences?
Yeah, well, see, we have 1,400 hostas, and we hope to be on the tour. That's the big difference. That's the big difference to drawing people to Ada. That's the huge difference. You can have a few hostas, whatever, and most people just have a few of them. But all of whom are eaten this year, but maybe three to five.
Yeah.
You saw the pictures.
Yeah, it's tough. It's definitely tough.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you so much, sir.
We've, Member Bruno, let's take, anybody else have any additional comments?
It's a good point. I mean, I, you know.
I actually texted one of the board members to ask where we at on this call. Are we going to do a call? Are we not going to do a call? I defer to you as a board member. Can you elaborate on where we stand as a township on our deer population?
We're nowhere near getting to the point where we're shooting deer with snipers.
Okay.
Especially in residential areas.
In residential areas with night vision scopes.
I have a question for you here. May I ask, Brian? This type of fence has to, a permit for this has to be issued as a special use permit, correct? So we would address this on a case-by-case basis, which to my minds, I would seem to address the potential issue of people coming in here and the slippery slope argument that somebody might make. I think that would allow us a good review on a case-by-case basis and perhaps address Member Bruno's concerns here.
Madison is nodding yes. I want to put that on the record, and she's firing up her microphone, so.
I just wanted to comment. I did, in my staff comments, take that into consideration on letter I, that as the township's deer population increases, this type of request may become more common, and if it does, then I think that is when we would address it with the zoning ordinance amendment. But before, this still seems like an exception, so until it becomes a pattern, that's when we typically address it, or that's how our ordinance asks us as staff to review, if that helps.
And the neighbors didn't complain about it.
I drove back there. It was pretty wooded, so yeah, you're not going to see a chain link fence, but do I hear any other comments or a motion?
I'm making a motion to follow the staff's recommendations.
We still need to hold the public hearing for this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good catch. I'm not used to it with fences. Okay, I hear a motion to go to public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Member Engle, supported by Member Moxley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll go to public hearing. If anybody wishes to come forward and speak on this matter, please do so. Hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Member Engle, supported by Member Moxley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Now, hear a motion.
I will make a motion to, in case 233786, to follow the staff recommendation to issue a type-one special use permit allowing an eight-foot tall fence on the Deppi property.
Okay, right here, support.
Support.
Member Engle made the motion. I'm going to say, Trusty Nordhook supported. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One, no, Member Bruno opposes.
No, I said aye.
Alright. We'd love to see pictures of those hostas next year. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes. Move on to Article Eight, Case Number 233787, King.
Excuse me. You know.
And we get Madison again. He's a lot quicker than you are, Brian. I'm just going to put that out there. Yeah, a little bit more efficient.
Yes, yeah.
Alrighty, we have Ms. King here tonight from 6820 Burton Street Southeast. This is just south of Burton Park, at the tail end of the east side of Burton Street. She is requesting an eight-foot fence as well. She is requesting it for privacy reasons. She, as you can see on the site plan, just directly south of her parcel is her neighbor's side yard where he keeps his RV in the off-season, which he is permitted to do in his side yard. Because of his ability and permission to store his there, Ms. King would like to install a fence so that that is not what she has to look at outside of her home. Then note I want to make on my staff report is where it says nine, it should say eight.
Yeah, I thought that.
The original request was for nine, but our maximum is eight feet, just to clarify that note. The design of the fence, I have been updated that it will be a wooden fence. I have an image. If you guys would like to see it, I can grab it from my cell phone. Fences do not require a building permit, and previously, the township has granted a variance for an eight-foot fence or a six-foot fence in the front yard. When considering our factors for this fence approval, we looked into if it would impact the neighbors or the light flow or ventilation in the area. She is requesting just about a 50-foot stretch of fencing, just so she doesn't have to see the RV, so it wouldn't be taking up a lot of her property, and it would be at least, I believe I said, 100 feet away from adjacent homes. So I did not find that it would be a negative impact. It is setback 50 feet from Burton Woods Court. So because she is technically a corner lot, she is meeting those setback requirements of not putting it in front of the home for Burton Woods Court, which is running north-south here. And then she's also behind her home, obviously, from Burton Street, so she's meeting those setbacks. I did not see a fire safety hazard, and she does not have any special restrictions on her property. Her request, I recommend to be approved for the reasons listed above. And then added the same, if you wanted to add conditions for some percentage of light or transparency for the fence.
Okay.
Does that cover?
Member Moxley has a question, yes.
Yes.
What's the distance between the proposed fence line and the property line?
I believe it's at least 10 feet, but there is no setback for fences required.
Okay.
But the applicant might know better, her plan. She's a master gardener, so she has a garden all along the back there. You can't see it super well in this picture, but it's actually beautiful gardens that she'd like to have the fence on the back for trellis.
Okay. Any other questions for Madison? You said the applicant is here?
Yes, but I believe her son would like to speak tonight to help her out.
No problem. If he could come forward. Thank you so much, Madison.
Thanks, Madison.
I'm sure we'll have questions. And if you could, when you come forward, just state your name for the record so we have it.
My name's Chuck King. I live on Sudbury and Cascade.
Hey, Joe.
So there's a garden?
Yeah, my mom's an advanced master gardener, so this is not technically a fence, it's a screen. She's been having to look at this RV for the last 15 years, and she tried to come in with the prior administration to talk about it, and they shut her down, so thanks, Madison, for helping my mom.
Okay.
So she would do a lot of landscaping. It's going to look really nice on her side. The guy, I have a picture, but you can go out there. The neighboring house, the guy's like on the road this summer with his RV. They have one small window that faces his RV, and they have to look at it the same too, but it doesn't bother them, so. And then the other neighbor to the east, is that right, Mike?
Yes.
He's here, and that fence really, again, that screen doesn't really bother him too much. It's a heavily wooded area that's really have cool lots because it overlooks the park and the trees. So there's nobody to bother over there, except the turkeys and the deer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
It sounds like this has been a source of friction between neighbors. What?
I guess that guy does what he wants to do. I've never met him, so, but a lot of other neighbors have talked to me about him, so.
I guess my question is, what else have you looked at besides, you know, putting a fence up? Have you had?
Well, we didn't want to, we didn't want to put in trees because that was kind of pricey, and then you try to find the right tree that the deer don't eat. Then you get the mushroom effect of the cedars, you know, so that doesn't really help you. She's higher. She's 10 feet higher because there's quite a bit of gray drop down there, up over there, so that was one of the solutions, and it just seems to be now's the time to do it, I guess.
Joe, Member Engle?
That was my question. I just want to, what other attempts have you made to work things out with your neighbor in terms of either different storage locations or perhaps putting something on his side to?
I don't think he's, I can't speak for him. I don't think he's
And your neighbor, her neighbor to the immediate east is okay with the fence?
Yes.
Mike, whoever you are up there. Okay, alright, thank you.
I would really call it a screen. I mean, it's not keeping anything in, keeping anything in or out, and we also have the deer issue, so. And I think the deer are getting bigger and stronger because they can go over eight-foot fences.
Madison?
Add, I don't know if I included it in the packet, but the township did communicate with her neighbor to see if he would be willing to store his RV in a less obtrusive spot for her. He, obviously, we could not require that of him, but he was not interested in in changing his storage, so.
Got it.
Just so you know, we did make that attempt on her behalf.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other?
Yeah, kind of taking Member Engels. I have no concept of what the small little screen will cost, but is there any thought to incentivizing and putting out half the costs that would be sunk into this to come and contact with your neighbors, say, just put it in a different spot?
I guess, if you have the permission to do it from the township, and then we have a little more leverage to go say, hey, we'd like to do this. Would you like to, you know, contribute? I'm not sure based on what I've heard that he will, but we'll probably approach that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, we're going to do a public hearing.
Hi, I'm Jenny Juaney, Chair of Parks Committee in 6255 Heathmore Court, and
Can I get us into public hearing first?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. You can stay right there. I just want to formally get us there so we can, we can be official. So can I hit a motion to move to public hearing?
Make a motion to move to public hearing?
Thank you, Member Engle. Thank you, Member Moxley, for supporting. All those in favor, please say aye. Sure want to go to public hearing if Jenny's going to speak.
I'm just saying.
Thank you, Alan.
Now we can limit it to three minutes.
Good call. Yeah, I'll be speedy.
It'll be great to see you, Jenny. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also the retired MSU Extension Master Naturalist Coordinator, and Joanne took my program, so I've been to her yard and gardens. The neighbor in the back also runs the RV periodically, so she also has the exhaust issue that then just permeates into her yard, which makes it difficult for her to sit on her patio deck and enjoy the outside. So I hope you will consider approving her request because it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak on this matter?
I don't know.
If I could have your name and address?
Scott Van Salk, 2570. I'm fine with the fence, but I mean, if this has been going on for 15 years, I don't know, and she's a master gardener, why she wouldn't have just put up a wall of shrubs, a natural barrier. I mean, 15 years, those things could have been 20, 30 feet tall by now, and a fence is not going to keep exhaust out. But I'm fine with a fence. If she wants to spend the money and block it out, I wouldn't want to look at an RV either, so.
Sure. Thanks. Thank you. If anybody else that would like to come forward, I'd ask that you state your name and address for the record.
Mike Kronk, 6830 Burton Street Southeast, and I live immediately to the east of Joanne. And just for the record, I just wanted to say that I have no problem personally with her having that fence, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Would anybody else like to come forward and speak?
Hello, my name is Rosalba Klapp. I own three houses in Cascade Township. I have known Mrs. King for 30 years, and we go back to the same. If we put bushes, guess what? The deer are going to eat it. I own a whole bunch of use around my house, and they're all eating. So, just shows my case.
Thank you.
And they're not eating fences yet.
Yet. That compelling statement just did it for me. Okay, anybody else like to speak on this matter? Anybody? Madison online? Do we have anybody online?
Wait, you've got, Chris, you've got one more person.
Feel free to come forward. I think that's the applicant.
I'll be right there.
Sure, sure. Alright, Madison can bring you the mic if you'd like to stay there. Make it easy.
Juan King at sixty-eight twenty Burton. I, I didn't hear this gentleman's statement. Um, so I, is that, would that be in the, the recording to hear it?
It will be.
Thank you. I would like to hear that. My major point is, is that I was told not to put blame, but once upon a time in um October twenty-fourteen, the township changed its ruling from no parking campers in our lots and our home sites to accepting campers in home sites. And that became my dilemma. The camper is stretched specifically across the south side of my yard across the whole view of the deck. There were trees there once upon a time and then my world changed in twenty-fourteen in this regard. So I would appreciate your consideration. Madison has helped me tremendously. The old regime, it all fizzled. I worked on it for a while. I never got anywhere. So when Jenny came and visited, my, my teacher girl from studying nature, she showed me how things could get done and she brought me the paperwork and introduced me to Madison to help me with my project. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jenny sends all kinds of applicants our way, so. Yes, okay.
She's a volunteer.
She is awesome. Uh, do we have any other public, anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? And anybody online, Madison? No? All right, uh, I hear a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Moved by Member Angle, supported by Member Moxley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with this. My, my question is, should we as a zoning board look at putting some language? Um, that says if you do park it, park an RV or a boat or whatever and it is obstructing your neighbor's views, then you're responsible for putting a fence up around it.
I'd love to go back to fourteen and understand why they made that ruling. If there's something that we don't know or understand or um.
Are you talking about changing the ruling?
No, no, we're just discussing it. Uh, I said I would love to come back to twenty-fourteen and understand it and look at the deliberation.
Yeah.
But I, I concur. I think it would be good to review that um separately.
I just don't feel that it should be and, you know, I'm saying down the road, like it shouldn't be the, you know, it shouldn't be her responsibility to put the fence up. It should be the person who's parking their RV and that, you know, down the road. I think we should
Yeah.
Look at that.
Sounds like a subcommittee you could lead.
You're only saying that because Scott's not here.
I would agree with that. And I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do in this? Obviously, we can't force anything, but could we, could we, nothing to say, you know?
It's a conforming use.
Yeah, well, it's conforming use, but propose, you know, I'm sure that there's more out of the box thinking. Basically, neighbor A is willing to contribute half of what the fence would cost to incentivize you to move it. You know, some, something of the sort. I, I don't know.
I don't know how we could enforce that, but I, I love the thing.
We can, but it's a suggestion. It's a table and see if there's, you know, three other things you could check off the list and then come back. And if not, we approve it.
Okay. Any other? Trustee? I feel like you're all alone down there. You want to come over?
Nope.
All right, um, Jody, have something to say?
I do not.
Okay, sorry. Look, you have a motion to make?
I would make a motion that in case twenty-three thirty-seven eighty-seven, that we approve the um, township's recommendation that we issue a special use permit for an eight foot tall fence on the King property.
Support.
Okay, motion made by Member Angle and supported by Trustee Nordhook. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Ms. King, I would love to see pictures a year from now when that fence is up and the garden is up. Thank you so much. Okay, let's move on to what you're all here for. Article nine, case twenty-three dash three seven four six, Chen. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so here, as a reminder, the applicant's requesting a type two special use permit to allow for a commercial composting operation to be located at fifty-seven forty-five Whitneyville. The site is located on the west side of Whitneyville between fifty-second and sixtieth streets and is in the agricultural and rural conservation zoning district. So the planning commission had forwarded a positive recommendation to the township board after the June nineteen meeting. The township board reviewed the application at the June twenty-eight and July twenty-six meetings, after which they decided to send it back to the planning commission for further consideration. The board expressed some concern regarding retail sales onsite and the traffic that might bring as well as potential negative effects to neighboring properties. The applicant has submitted a letter, which is included in the meeting packet and includes additional information and clarifications to address those concerns. The applicant goes into detail describing the measures that will be taken to prevent noxious odors as well as contaminants from leaving the site. Uh, these include the use of small scale deliveries that can be easily processed, the covering of all active compost piles, an aerated compost system to prevent anaerobic conditions, and a line detention basin to capture runoff from the active composting area. To address the board's concerns, five additional conditions have been added to the original eight for a total of thirteen proposed conditions. Uh, these added conditions will help to limit traffic as they prohibit the dropping off of food scraps by third parties and limit the sale of material to appointment only so that sales will not be open to the general public. The applicant did have some concerns with conditions number ten and thirteen that they uh, might want to speak to tonight. Condition number ten refers to the property at fifty-six fifty-one Whitneyville to the northeast. Uh, that property owner has indicated that they plan to begin construction of a home shortly and are concerned with the lack of screening shown on the site plan. That property is within four hundred feet of the operational area, um, but currently there's no home on it. The applicant has some concern with the cost of planting five large trees in that area, uh, when there's already a hill that partially screens the operational area and they are planting a number of smaller fruit trees throughout the property. Um, I'll let the applicant speak more to that as well, but perhaps a combination of a couple of larger trees with some of the already planned fruit trees um, would be adequate screening there. And then regarding condition thirteen, the applicant pointed out that restoring the property to its original condition would involve removing any trees that have been planted. I would suggest amending that condition to read if the composting operation is discontinued, any contamination and all composting material and composting intakes must be remediated and removed off of the site. The application is scheduled for another public hearing tonight. Uh, after the public hearing, um, staff are recommended a four deposit recommendation back to the township board with the thirteen conditions listed in the staff memo in the packet.
I have a couple of questions for you, so I'll start and then pass it around. At this time, we are not uh uh, granting or, or, or not allowing Wormies to operate as a business. That's correct, right? We're, this is just about expanding operations.
Correct. So again, there is that history of prior approval.
I want to, yeah, I just want to make sure everybody in the audience understands that, that we, we are not making a ruling whether Wormies can or cannot operate tonight. Uh, that, that was made by a previous staff member, uh, and, and that, that was determined by our attorney, something we could not back out of. Is that, is your understanding accurate?
Yes, yep.
Yeah. Um, I can tell you that the relationship we have with Brian now, uh, that would never happen, uh, because we, we have a, a much better relationship with staff where these type of uh, you know, stamp approvals don't happen. Um, but, but here we are. And so Wormies has been approved. Um, if Wormies did not operate there, let's say that they, they, they up and moved uh, and somebody came in and wanted to have a farm there under the Right to Farm Act. Is there any type of requirements that we could place on them that we have here?
Typically not for a farm. Most farming operations are protected by the Right to Farm Act and exempt from local um, restrictions.
And so we would have no power should a farm go in the same place. So let's say they wanted to spray toxic chemicals that are approved by the state. And by the way, they have approved many. Or if they wanted to stream or spray manure all over that field.
Or a pig farm.
Or a pig farm. Would they be allowed to do that? And is there anything that we could do as a township to stop them?
We mostly would have, we have very limited ability to do anything for that.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions? Yes, and then Member Roland.
Your, your edits to uh, condition number thirteen, is that in the packet or is that something that you can throw up? Can you say it one more time?
Yep, yeah, I can say that again. So again, that's based on kind of the conversation, returning it to its previous state. I mean, they're doing a, you know, good planting trees and things like that. So um, I had to recommend uh, amending that to read if the composting operation is discontinued, any contamination and all composting material and composting intakes must be remediated and removed off of the site.
But not return to the original?
Correct. Again, they're, they're planting, they've already planted a number of trees on the site and things like that.
Right, because that was on my list. Good.
Yep. Brian, is there anything that Mr. Chen and the Wormies uh, has been, have been asked to do by the township or by the board that they have not done to your satisfaction?
I don't believe so, no.
Thank you.
Trustee Nordak?
Well, um, first of all, these guys in my mind are very responsible businessmen. But I have a concern with the word commercial special use permit. Um, if it was just composting operation, take commercial out of it. And I'm not looking at these guys. I'm looking at maybe eight years down the road, they need forty acres and they pack up and leave special use sticks here. I don't want a commercial operation jumping in on that. This is, we just spent tens of thousands of dollars in legal fees with another deal in the township because of that special use permit that tied our hands. So I'm concerned with the word commercial.
So again, that's the way it's, that's not necessarily what they're proposing. That's the way it's written in the zoning ordinance. So we can always amend the zoning ordinance to take out that word commercial. But that's why we've added that condition of limiting sales to appointment only. So it's not like they'll have a, a shop set up there that anyone can stop by and purchase composting. But if that's a concern moving forward, we can amend the zoning ordinance to strike that word commercial. Um, that's the way we have written that, not the applicant necessarily.
Yeah, I think I need to do that.
And we can move that moving forward, but since we have an application in front of us now, we're putting the conditions on to limit any type of sale onsite and those conditions would run with the land. So someone else couldn't come in and start selling it or having an open retail site, maybe held to those same conditions here.
Thank you. Member Bruna?
I asked that exact same question at the previous meeting in why, why commercial versus agricultural? And the, the answer I got at that point was it's, it's similar to like a farm stand. So that's the commercial aspect of the agricultural operation. But we're now saying that the farm stand doesn't exist. It's farm stand by appointment.
That's right. That's, again, that's in a condition, that's a concern the board brought up. So we added that condition to even further limit that onsite.
Okay. And then my final question for you, um, maybe it's for both of you. So we sent this up to the board. They added conditions and threw it back, which to me, to me, if they added conditions, they would have approved it.
Staff, so I've added these based on the concerns the board brought up.
Oh.
So they didn't, they didn't get into this kind of detail. They, they gave kind of the general concerns. I, working with legal counsel as well, put together conditions to bring back to the planning commission to recommend. So they didn't go into this detail at that meeting, correct?
So that probably answers my kind of, that was the first part of the question. So does this address all of the issues that the board had? Or are they wanting us to get creative and add conditions fourteen through sixteen?
I think we, I think we're good. We just need to get that commercial word up by going in in the future, taking that out.
We can do that.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Um, I, we'll hear from the applicant. Um, I do, would like to limit it given the sheer amount of people. So if the applicant would like to come forward. Hello again.
Hi, Larry. Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, yeah, just to follow up on uh, Mr. Team. Um, yeah, I agree. Uh, commercial composting title does not apply to us. We, we are an on-farm composting operation in scale. We associated sales, you know, we, we sell the compost. So I, I have, I brought, I brought that up to Eagle, the regulators. Because that, that's, they, they wanted to help us. They wanted this to happen. But I told them that the wording that you are using is not helping us, you know? You have, you have, you have us in the category of on-farm composting scale. But because I want to sell the compost, you added the title commercial. So now that scares everyone, you know? Um, you know, e- every business sells things. So everybody does commerce. So, yeah, and so, yeah, I wanted to discuss in addition to that, the uh, condition number ten. Um, where the neighbor uh, oh, there is a request for screening of trees. Uh, but if you look at the, at the site plan, uh, there is a huge hill in the middle of, in between the composting uh, space in that northeast corner. It's a huge hill. It's uh, thirty feet high. Uh, you can barely see. John, can you pass me that? You cannot see anything, uh, you know, from, from that neighbor. Um.
Where does he want it? Point it on the, on the map where he's right there? Okay.
And all of this right here is the ridge line that he's talking about, thirty feet up. And so like, when you're standing down here in this valley, you can't see what's going on over there at all. So.
So he wants five trees right there in that little corner? Okay, right there. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly don't think we should be putting that much time in for, for that request, but um, I, I just feel it's a little bit unfair to put it as part of the conditions because he hasn't even uh, built his house and I'm gonna spend five thousand dollars on his trees. No, why don't we talk about that when you have a house, you know? Um, and in addition to that, there, there is a screening already. Uh, the video is not loading, but I, I had a drone going in from that corner. Uh, 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 from the, so, from the ground uh, up. So you can see, um, the drone has to fly really high so you, so you can see the paths that we have there. Um.
So finally, um, this is where we planted the hundred trees, especially like up on that hill. So even more screen. So got the hill and growing trees.
Yeah, how many years do you think that they will take?
I mean, a couple until they start producing fruit and everything, but already they're over there. So.
Yeah, so there, there are plans for, for that, for those trees there. So there, there should, there is enough screening. Um, I don't think it's fair to, to request to put, you know, additional screening on that area. Uh, and then in regards to number thirteen, Brian already uh, reworded. It was a little bit too uh, open there. Um, yeah, again, um, you know, thank you very much for the time. And as a homework, you know, for people still wondering about the risks of nuisances or contamination, I will encourage you to look at an actual uh, industrial uh, composting operation called Sport Industries. They are located in Michigan. Uh, that's what we call an industrial uh, composting operation. And you will see the difference, you know, we don't have anything eh, even close to what they have, you know, the, the tire, the size of the tires that they use for, on their equipment will be the size of the, the vehicles that, that we use, the size of our tractor. You know, what they, what they move in one day will, will be what we move in one year, you know? So um, it, it, I, 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 you know, I urge you to please uh, just let us uh, operate and, and give us an opportunity to, to operate our business. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen.
Maybe we can stay up here because I've got questions for him, as I'm sure you do. So.
Go ahead.
All right, so I've got three questions for you. The trees, I think you, I think I, I thought I heard you say it was going to cost about five thousand dollars to add those trees? Okay. Um, number nine with the meat, and, and I know we've talked about this a bunch of times, I don't, you don't allow meat in the deposit of your, yours. It's more like banana peels and that kind of stuff, right? you don't allow meat in the deposit of your, yours. It's more like banana peels and that kind of stuff, right?
Yeah, no, no meat, vegetables, scraps, post, post costume, post consumer food waste. I mean, pre-consumer food waste.
Okay. And then the, um, the retail by appointment.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a problem with that?
No, I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's, it is restrictive and, um, I mean, it, it seems unfair, honestly, you know, who, what business gets this type of restrictions? Uh, we do operate in that manner. That's why I'm not objecting to it because you know, the nature of our business will, we want to avoid people from stopping by and dropping off anything or thinking that this is a landfill because of the name composting. So yeah, we don't encourage people to come without an appointment. We have a chain, we have cameras. Um, for that reason, I'm not objecting. But yeah, it is unfair, you know, to ask me to to, to have that request. Yeah, I feel like it's unfair.
Okay. Member Bruno.
Um. I'm not really thrilled with the wording on number nine, and I'm wondering if you could help us come up with something better. I, I, I don't like the, um, we say no meat or animal parts, um, trying to prove a negative is, is always really hard. So, so can we turn that into what is allowed? Would that be easier? Because I see no meat or animal parts, and I'm guessing someone in the crowd is going to say, what about grass clippings? And I know I read your eighty page document. Again, I know no grass clippings. So listing all the noes could take infinite pages. Is there a more succinct way to say what you will be composting?
Yeah, we compost food waste. Um, vegetable scraps.
Okay.
Uh, manures and wood chips.
Okay. Brian, can we somehow maybe reword that? Because I guess I don't, you know, no meat or animal parts is valid. It's good. But then we have no grass clippings, no this, no that. Where, where do we end?
So I mean, yeah, our concern is really just with some of those things that may be more likely to cause smells or attract animals or things like that. So that's why we're singling those out as saying those are not permitted because those are, would be more likely to be attracting flies, birds, or more likely to attract smell. So that's why we singled those out specifically as not being permitted.
Well, I think grass is going to be a major odor. So if we're going for odors, I won't forget grass in there. Um.
Yeah, no, I, I, I can totally agree with the basis. And I mean, that's why we don't take, uh, animal parts because they tend to go into a stage of anaerobic decomposition, which attracts pests and things like that, grubs, eh, maggots, flies. Uh, so that's a big reason, you know, why we don't compost those.
And, um, in your letter in response to the board's, um, meeting, um, you talk about blowing through your, your, your piles. I just want to confirm that that's kind of a misnomer. Are you still doing negative pressure? You actually sucking through your piles?
Yeah, that's, that's in the plan. Yes.
Okay. Is that what, that was a, that was a, an advantage that is why I helped vote yes the first time. But if we're backpedaling on it, so, so that response to the board is kind of misstated. Is that correct?
Uh, can you repeat the question?
Your letter to the board says you will be blowing through your piles. That would be a positive pressure system.
Oh, yeah.
You're using a negative pressure system. You're actually sucking through your piles.
Correct. Yeah. So the, the compost pad, um, right here cover compost pay base. That's what we call the active phase of composting. That's what, that's the space where we have the nuisance risk. None of these, all of these piles are, are mature in piles. They have gone through the active phase of the composition, the composition that happens here in this path. Uh, so there are going to be six bays, three on each side. And underneath the concrete, um, there is going to be a space where we put, uh, PVC pipes or metal pipes with, with holes that are going to hold.
Yeah. It's like on page thirteen of your packet. Can you have it, give your packet up?
I don't have, I don't have a way.
I just want to make sure on page thirteen, you saw positive pressure, negative pressure. And I'm sure it's for compare and contrast. I just, you're doing negative pressure.
Yeah, we're, we're doing negative.
Alright, thank you.
Good. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This time I will hear a motion to move to public hearing.
So moved.
Um, it's motion made by member Ringo, supported by Boxley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, so as I mentioned, we're going to limit, uh, public comment to, to three minutes. I'd ask that when you come forward, you, you state your name and address. Uh, and we'll go from there. So feel free to approach the podium and Madison, let me know if we have anybody as we wind down on, uh, so.
How do you guys decide whether it's three or five minutes, just a whim?
The chairman's discretion and given the size of the crowd, I make that call.
Okay. Just wondered, because the first two were just fences. But anyway, he spoke for four minutes and fifty seconds.
He's the applicant, so.
He's a, he's a property owner and so am I.
Okay.
So my question is, when he, um, when they first came forward, we heard all about the grants and it was all in there and they were going to have school groups come and they were going to have classes and they were going to do this. And that's what they got the grants for, right? To promote this. I, at the other meeting, heard now one thing about how they were going to make this thing ADA compliant for these school groups, these classes. My daughter's a teacher. She has a kid in a wheelchair. She's got a deaf kid. She's got a blind kid. Now I did not hear one single thing on how that's going to be addressed. These kids have a right. If there's going to be these things and they're getting grants for this um, government money. This, this has to be addressed. And it was not, and it was never questioned by any of you. After the meeting, I came up to you and said, how is this going to be addressed? And from what I'm hearing, it never was. So you just don't care about ADA compliance? You thought nobody would notice? Um, my third, my second question is really for them, just because I don't know. Are wormies? Is it a year round thing? Do worms go dormant? I don't know. You're shaking your head, but what does that mean?
Ma'am, this is, ma'am, I'm, I'm going to stop this. But this is, but this is, ma'am, ma'am. With all due respect, this is public comment. This is not question and answer. So.
You have question and answer.
That, that, that is our job and, and that, that is the process. So I'm just saying this is public comment. I'm not, I'm trying to be disrespectful.
I'd like you to address the ADA problem, the question then.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Darren Stedman, fifty-five, thirty-nine, when you go indirectly to the north. Um, he's already planted a hundred trees, puts five more, right? So I asked you guys to stay firm on that. I ask you to stay firm on all your principles. So I just, uh, you guys have your hands tied, obviously, for the last guy here. So it's not all I got, but I appreciate you listening. Thank you so much.
Jim Berry, owner of fifty-six, fifty-one, Whitneyville Avenue, the one where I've requested the trees.
Yes.
For cover there. Um. I don't know the zoom controls, but it's too nice to put C.
You leave it there, Brian, and zoom in or Madison will. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is the property. There will be the home site right there in that square, relatively square area. And this is the area that is open right here. There is no cover for that. From what I see from this, it seems to be the same elevation. And to be intended to do a two-story home. So you want something that will provide public for the future. So, uh, I had enjoyment in my property there. Uh, it is to be a retirement home. So thinking long-term with it. And, uh, we're looking and requested those formally before we put the money into the home. You know, it's going to be, it, it isn't cheap. They're getting more expensive. So would like something there for, uh, assurance of enjoyment of the property without, you know, visibility of, of anything else behind it. And, uh, have requested that formally to, to protect the enjoyment and the property value there for my wife and myself and our, our family. Um. Other than that, uh, that's the, the main concern I have is putting that money into the property to build a new home and then having that, you know, operating behind it. So requested the consideration for tree coverage there of reasonable and decent size, not just little saplings or something that would take, you know, decades, something of reasonable size that would grow up quickly and match the, the area around it, please.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Yes.
Ellis Van Tynan, five-five-two-seven, Whitneyville. And I was not aware that this was already a done deal. Um, I knew that you know, there was one person that gave permission and I think that's really a back way, way to get into something. And I, it's very disappointing for Cascade Township to have that happen. But I, I think the best thing that was said that, um, you all probably get the Cascade connections and from the supervisor, it says right in here, it was the natural beauty of Cascade that moved early settlers to declare, quote, Cascade is to be a place of trees and falling waters. Although Cascade looks quite different today, maintaining our community's natural beauty and character are a top priority. To that end, our goals of enhancing our residents' quality of life and ensuring Cascade remains, quote, a place of trees and falling waters is by conserving green space and natural areas. And apparently she's not aware of what you guys have already approved in our residential area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have you state your name and address for the record, please.
Chandler Schelzky, fifty-seven, forty-five, Whitneyville. Um, focus this here. Perfect.
There we go.
Five-seven-four-five, Whitneyville Ave, Southeast, uh, Elto, Michigan. Um, this would be the view from that northeast lot there. Um, and as the last person said, yeah, Cascade is about being beautiful and about the nature. And this is what it looks like now. And if you went there, you'd see so many pollinators, so many butterflies, so many songbirds. Um, we're leaving this whole entire northeast side of the property wild like that. And that's up on top of the hill there. We planted a lot of the trees and everything and don't see anything to do with the, the compost site. And if we have to plant the trees, then we'll plant the trees. But like, to address like the concern about the beauty and the nature of Cascade, like that's exactly what we have in mind. We want running water. We want trees. We want to reforest and to conserve this land. We don't want a huge parking lot. We're not trying to bulldoze this. We're not trying to, you know, till up the soil. We're not trying to do anything like that. We're trying to grow trees and have an oasis of life. And we're very much, um, here for nature. We are nature. And we're stewards of the land and we're not trying to make an eyesore at all. Uh, here's a little video of, of the property. Oh, boy. Maybe not, but it is absolutely beautiful. And yeah, if, uh, nature is your concern and like, please, like, we are on your side and we're trying to be good neighbors. Absolutely. We do not want eyesores. We do not want nuisances. We want to create good compost responsibly to make more nature, to create, uh, an inoculant of biology to help prevent diseases from overtaking these trees and, you know, the nature around us. Everything about our compost is for nature and for, you know, increasing the beauty around us.
Um, let, let's hold. Yeah.
Just kind of, where am I standing? This is from the point of view of.
Of the, uh, the property on the northeast side.
I'm trying to show you, it's, uh, the drone is still going up probably fifty feet now, and you cannot even see a trailer over there in the distance. And this is from, you know, that northeast corner. Uh, now, you know, the, the green color over there is a pile of compost in the distance, a hundred and fifty feet pile of compost.
And so that's the, the covered cloth there on top of the pile.
There, the drone is probably, I don't know, three hundred feet high. So, um.
Again, our compost piles are not huge. They are up to our knees. You know, like we said, the industrial compost, their piles are up over the ceiling, like.
The benefit of the neighbor, you know.
Thirty, thirty seconds.
I, I will encourage to keep the, the view open because you're going to miss. If you put three blocking your view. My honest, eh, recommendation, you know, to keep the view open for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please come forward. You, again, could state your name and address so we have it for the record.
Yeah, my name is Gerald Alexander, fifty-eight, sixty, Whitneyville Avenue. Uh, the traffic in that area continues to increase. Um, since I've been there, there have been numerous accidents and people dying on the corner of Sixtieth and Whitneyville. And this seems to be, uh, just adding some more traffic. And I can't see why they can't put on Sixtieth, uh, a flashing red light from each side. Because just, just a sign there is easy to, to miss. And this would be a lifesaver. Uh, you get a flashing red light from those two spots there on Sixtieth. And if possible, to get a flashing yellow one. Because when you're coming over, when you're going south, you're going over that hill, it's right there. And if a flashing yellow is there a little higher, it's going to be, it's going to alert the traffic. And, uh, you know, just increase this traffic. It's getting pretty bad already. I just hate to see more lives lost.
Thank you. Um, the Kent County Road Commission manages the, the road system. Um, but Brian can, can certainly help put you in the right direction to the right person there is, I concur with you. The having something there would, would be a good thing. This body unfortunately doesn't do it, but we can.
Well, I realize you can't say yay or nay, but I mean, you have an influence.
We, we, we do. And that's what I'm saying. If you talk with Brian directly and share exactly, he can get that to the road commission. And if you're willing to do that, I think it would be helpful.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm, uh, Nellah Warner, fifty-four, eighty, Whitneyville Road. I did not know of this until this past Wednesday evening. I would, and I cannot understand why there would be a commercial thing right in the middle of all of the the residential that we have. We have enough traffic, but you have the, the, uh, or if the resident, the, uh, commercial could not have gone closer to the other commercial. But we have this wide area that's residential. And now we put, right in the middle, we put this commercial. I, I don't understand how it, how it can happen. But I, from what I hear tonight, it's a done deal. So, but I would not be for the commercial right in the middle of all of the rest of the town. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Van Salcom.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh, Scott Van Salcom, twenty-five, seventy, orange. Um, Wormmies, they bought this building or this property on the word of the township employees, obviously that have been here for twenty plus years, who thankfully are no longer here. employees, obviously that have been here for twenty plus years, who thankfully are no longer here. We have a, a better planning person. Uh, but they bought it back in July of twenty twenty-one, seven hundred and seventy-six days ago for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Before Luis came in tonight, I asked him outside, would you have bought this property here if the the township employee said, you can't do that here? He said, no, why would I? And he even checked to see if he could. And this is zoned agricultural. It's not residential. And for agriculture to occur, you need soil. They literally are making soil. And not just putting down chemicals and, and random fertilizers and all this stuff that's denigrating the, the land and the earth. They're using natural processes with worms and, and what have you. And it basically just speeds it up. I, you know, I didn't really know much about it. I actually went out to their site. I don't know if you guys have. It's a beautiful place. There was no smell. There was no odors. There was really no issues that, that I could see. Now granted, I'm not the, the, you know, know of the expertise or what have you. Um, I used to work in Lowell where they had the biodigester. And I don't know if you guys heard anything about that, but those people had no idea what they were doing. They were trying to get fuel from fats and solids and, and oils, you know, other food sources, but they weren't just, you know, fruits and vegetables and, and compost like that. They were doing stuff that would stink. And it made that whole town smell. And it was disgusting for like, uh, two years until they finally got shut down. And it was just a bad idea because number one, the people running it had no idea what they were doing. These people, they know what they are doing. They have been in operation in other parts of, I believe in Genesee or Grand Rapids in a residential neighborhood. And there were no complaints, no issues. You know, and regarding, um, the trees, how about we wait until the gentleman actually builds his house? And see if it needs to be done. And I'm sure Mr. Chen would granted, maybe even go in half on it and allow this gentleman to put trees on his property. You know, but to say you have to put trees in there now before it's even erected or built. I mean, that's, that's ludicrous in my opinion. And regarding the, the retail sales, has any other business like shut down for that?
Thirty seconds.
I mean, we can't control the, the amount of traffic on Whitneyville. I know there is a lot, but to say you can't sell period. I mean, if someone drives by and sees Wormies and they pull in and say, hey, what's this all about? And they say, oh, we sell super organic, uh, dirt. And he's supposed to refuse it? I think that's, I think that's out of the, insane, in my opinion. And that's not the way America works. And that's not how capitalism works. To not advertise.
Scott, we're at three minutes. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Here it also says five.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Ruiz Klein. I live at fifty-five forty-two Whitneyville. I just got one question for all of you guys, just one. Any of you guys, how many of you guys would like this in your backyard? Have no problem with it whatsoever? How many of you can sit there and look me in the face and say it's all good? Can you do it? Soon as you can stand there and tell me it's all good. Cause it's a done deal. You guys sold us down the road. It's just as simple as that.
They sold us down the road? Not one of them will answer? Cause they know.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan Callahan-Croll with Miller Johnson, Legal Counsel for the applicant, Wormies LLC. I will keep my comments brief. Um, first of all, thank you very much for your very thorough and thoughtful consideration of this application. It was very clear from the questions that you asked this evening. What we ask you to consider and approve with the conditions this evening is that this applicant has done everything that has been asked of him repeatedly. There's been a lot of back and forth throughout this process, understandably so. Um, we, we do just want to reiterate that they have received a substantial grant from the state of Michigan. That grant is conditioned on receiving this expansion approval no later than December of this year. And so they are now a little bit under the wire. Um, with that being said, they have still even this evening discussed how they are agreeable to the additional five conditions that have been added to it. Um, and that is what we, so we ask that you do approve and send back to the township board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madison, we have somebody online. Let's do that. Good evening. Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, good evening. Uh, Craig Rumschlag, eighty-four fifty-six, Lower Ridge. Um, I would like the board and planning committee to consider additional types of products that may be growing on property. Um, doing some research on my own. If you look specifically at, uh, Chandler's and other employees of Wormies, um, specifically on social media, Jet House Gardens and Rising Moon Medicinals. Um, very active in the marijuana growing community. And, uh, very, 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 uh, very much concerned with just that type of activity tied to a commercial composting operation. Would like to hear from both Mr. Chen or Chandler if the plan is to also, um, grow commercial marijuana on this, on the property that they've purchased. And I'd be happy to share pictures and, uh, video clips, um, with any member of the board that would like to see what I have. But I, but I definitely, but I definitely think it needs addressed.
Thank you. Anybody else, Madison? Okay. Would anybody else like to come forward? Your motion to move out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Member Ringo, supported by Member Moxley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing non-opposed. Okay, let's have some discussion. Um, I was not here for the last time this was in front of us. The ADA thing sticks with me a little bit. Did we, do we, Brian, maybe I'll start with you. Did we address that at all? Or what, what? Did we take into consideration if there are in fact going to be planned field trips? That's something that, that we should look at, I would think.
Yep. And that hasn't come up before and it's hard from a zoning perspective and we don't have ADU requirements. There's, I believe, some building code requirements that if it's a public building, there'd be certain things that would be needed.
Okay.
I don't know if it needs to be ADA accessible if it's technically private property. Right? Yeah.
Terrier.
Yeah.
I think it was the same answer you gave us last time.
Okay. No, no, again, I wasn't here. So when somebody brings it forward, I want to make sure that we address it. So, um, any other thoughts, comments? Uh, start with Member Bernadette, Member Roland.
Um, I, I guess I, I, I empathize with my, should I get this right? At the, um, address fifty-six fifty-one, um, that's hoping to build a retirement home. But I look around this property and there's also a, a, a parcel at fifty-seven twenty-five Whitneyville, which doesn't appear to have any homes. Of course, this um, Regis map, I think it's from twenty twenty-two, so maybe out of date. I just questioned the, um, there's no home. There's not even a building permit in to, to make provisions for something that's a, a future thought is, 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 is a bit strange and what other people's reaction to that. Where, where do we draw the line? Are other people going to come forward and say, well, I hope to put a parcel split and put more homes along the edges? Any thoughts on that?
I would think that if he's going to build a home, he knows where it's at and he could plant a few trees himself right now to to help block.
Yeah.
All right. And then my other, um, question is, and I I'm gonna call him Mr. Merrill in the front, front row there. Um, his, his comments resonated with me, I gotta admit. Um, probably to the dismay of some of the other attendees, but, um, when I asked previously why the word commercial was in there and I got the answer about, you know, farm stand, I could, I could picture that and, and to have a farm stand by reservation is is kind of an oxymoron. Like that, it's a convenience. I, I, I would like to as a group discuss, um, not only, um, number ten, which I just mentioned the trees, but the, um, number eleven, retail sales limit by appointment only. While I understand the board has some concerns and they batted this back to us. Um, if I understand correctly, Brian, um, generated these and I, I personally, um, would not be supportive of bouncing it back to the board with ten and eleven present.
Could we ask the trustee? Um, where his, where, because I, I do think that you are representative of the majority of the board, uh, in this. I don't mean to assume, but I suspect, um, i- is
So, so if, so, so, so if we're gonna pitch to him, I'll, I'll do it differently.
Yeah, please do.
So let me ask this. Mr., um, Mr. Tim, Mr. Timmy.
Yeah.
So, um, I honestly don't traverse Whitneyville as often as maybe I should. I did come out and look at the site, um, but I do go out to Saskatoon. Saskatoon built a new nine, I believe it's called the Silver Nine. That probably generated immense traffic on Whitneyville because it got me back out golfing. To, to limit someone based on traffic on the road, you know, I'm, I'm picking Saskatoon because they're not in our purview, but it just seems odd that a business is going in and we're gonna try to limit traffic on the road. That seems beyond our.
I don't think that Wormies is gonna generate enough traffic where Kent County is gonna do a traffic study and request, you know, turn lanes or acceleration lanes or left turn lanes or any of that. You know, Chick-fil-A didn't. So I don't know how, how Wormies is gonna get the county involved on that road. That road's a major thoroughfare and there's all kinds of businesses that are served on there, so. Yeah, I
So, so I guess I didn't, I'm not sure what the answer was. So you, are you supportive of by appointment only or are you? If that was removed, would that impact your decision at the next level?
I'm not excited about the word commercial in there. Cause I don't want this thing open like from eight in the morning to ten at night with people just willy nilly driving in and out of there. I don't think they do either.
I agree.
So I think that's why they're happy with the by appointment only as far as they can control what's coming into their site. Like they said, you don't, you know, we don't want your grass clippings with just people driving and dropping.
Well, and see that's, and I've got issues with both those points as well, right? Um,
So let's do operating hours.
It, yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say was, you know, do you think the board would feel comfortable with, you know, eleven to three and then by appointment only if it's outside those hours as an example, I'm just speaking out loud. I, I, I I think it's unfair to say, hey, you know, it's appointment only. And I know that Wormies is okay with it, but I think it's and maybe what it's, hey, in a year, we check back in and expand those if everything's as we hope it will be. Then we expand those hours of operation.
Yeah, I can't speak for the whole board, but you know, put it in there and see what happens.
Okay. And then the trees I have a issue with. I mean, then we should have somebody put trees up to block, say, an RV.
I would, if it were me, I'd be planting trees.
Right. So.
On my property.
And then the marijuana piece, if they did grow marijuana, they would have to come in and get a special permit for that, wouldn't they? That.
Madison, we have a separate ordinance for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That doesn't allow marijuana. As defined in the and, 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 which means we only allow, uh, we definitely wouldn't allow it to.
Okay, so they wouldn't be allowed to grow marijuana on the premises. Okay. Yeah, didn't think so, but.
So this is discussion, correct? Yeah, so I I like your comment on the trees and they, they already and we held them to it. We put it in the conditional that they're gonna plant their hundred trees that they proposed. I don't want the, you know, the dangling carrot that we never get. We've already hammered home. They're gonna deliver on what they've promised. It seems to expand beyond that is, is scope creep.
Any other additional comments or thoughts? Trustee Nordic, how are you feeling about this? There's no sense in us doing all this if you're not in. So we need you in to
And I'm okay, and I agree, I'm okay with the commercial, removing the commercial portion too. I, I agree with you, I think.
And it'll be down, that'll be down the road. We gotta, we gotta do that after this.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it was, uh, it was an issue that was dealt us and, uh, we got, we're straightening it up. We're putting in as many things as we can. The owners of the operation have been fabulous, that are very patient. I have no doubts that they're gonna live up to their end of it. Again, it's my, my concern is the next person that buys the land. I just, that's where I want to protect.
Yeah.
So, yeah, other than that, I'm, I'm good.
Incorrectly, if I'm wrong, we put a provision, right? If, if this transfers, it restarts the, we get two more years of basically auditing.
Correct.
So we've, we've got coverage there.
In there.
Okay.
So Brian, I would say strike ten and then eleven, do something about, um, work with Wormies and come up with hours of operations if if somebody wants to do.
That sounds like a table. Or are you gonna make a motion and, and put that language there or?
Like, wanna figure that out now?
To move forward.
Yeah. We, we can, and we can instruct him as part of that motion. He needs to come up with the hours if that's your intent.
Or should we do that? Should we come up with the hours?
That is certainly whoever makes the motions purview to do.
Like what you said earlier.
Is this eleven to three?
Yeah.
Are we allowed to ask the applicant at this point for input on what the hours?
And do whatever we want. So if they'd like to bring the applicant.
Yeah, I'd like to bring the applicant up and ask them what they, if the applicant or the applicant's representative.
Yeah.
And then by appointment only if it's outside those hours.
Okay. Then one last one. I, I didn't bother going back and looking at the zoning ordinance. The thirty square foot sign, is that, um, in line with what the ordinance currently is? Smaller, larger, or just a?
That's, that's smaller. Again, so there's again, concern with the, you know, visibility on the road. And so they add, they're asking for a thirty square foot sign. They're allowed up to, I believe it's a sixty-four square foot sign. So we're just writing in what they're asking for. And again, that prevents someone in the future from then putting out a, a very large one.
Perfect.
So do I hear somebody putting together a motion down there?
Yeah, I gotta get to the front and see what it is. All right, um, I'll make a motion on case number two-two dash three-seven four-six, uh, Chen, um, to accept the additional, uh, additional, uh, conditions that the that were suggested with the exception of number ten, which we completely strike. And number eleven that we modify to, um, hours of operation between eleven and three. Anything outside those hours is by appointment only.
And that's sales during those hours?
Yeah, retail sales, yeah. To be conducted between eleven and three anytime outside those hours is by appointment only, or something to that effect.
You want to instruct the building department to review any ADA requirements to ensure that they're being complied with if it's your motion, say?
No.
Okay.
Support.
Okay. Motion made by Member Roland, supported by Member Moxley. Uh, Brian, do, if you don't mind doing a roll call.
Member Nordhook?
Yes.
Member Moxley?
Yes.
Member Mordeick?
Yes.
Member Engel?
Yes.
Member Bruno?
Yes.
Member Roland?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you all. I, I hope you can appreciate, uh, that we were dealt this and, um, tried to do our best to, to provide an adequate solution. So move on to article ten, uh, any old business that anybody has, or Brian. Uh, article eleven, any other business that we wish to address? Member Moxley.
Uh, Farmland Preservation Committee, is that on for Thursday?
So I'm gonna email out the representative from the county can usually meet Wednesday morning. So I'm gonna email the group, uh, if there's a Wednesday that can work for all of us then.
Seven thirty?
I'll ask him if he can do seven thirty or eight. So I'll check with him, but we'll look at next week, Wednesday, um, if that works for the group, but I'll send out an email tomorrow.
Okay.
So there will be no Thursday meeting?
Correct.
This week. Okay, thank you.
How about the, uh, village design?
Yeah, so we had the initial meeting from the Village Design Review Committee, which is again, one member from the Planning Commission, Zoning Board, DDA Township Board, and one additional member. Um, looking at those village design requirements. And if we want to alter those, what we want to look at, if we wanted to expand those to different areas of the township. So McKenna is assisting with that as well as part of the work they're doing with the DDA and the master plan. So we gave McKenna a few things to come back with. So I think they're still working on that. So I don't believe we have one scheduled for this week, but, um, I'll send one up to that again to get that group's second meeting in the next couple of weeks.
I mean, how, how'd that go? It's been what, a decade since that?
Right. So the original purpose of that group was just to review site plans that came in that don't meet those design requirements. But we're using that group to then review those design requirements. So again, it has been, yeah, at least ten years, I think, since. But we're using that group to then review those design requirements. So again, it has been, yeah, at least ten years, I think, since that that group has met. So, no, it was a good initial meeting. Got a little direct, got a little direct, again, that was just really an introduction, so getting some direction from them on areas you might want to look at, and then we'll kind of get that going. And again, that ties in directly to a lot of the work that DDA is doing with the, we'll call it Thornapple Center or Thornapple Plaza area, and then also the work we're doing with McKenna on reviewing the master plan, so tying into a lot of different areas.
I think it's pretty exciting that that's being revived and brought back once again. I recommend our supervisor for leading the charge there.
Concur. Okay, Member Bruno?
I was debating whether it's old or new, but I think it's new because it was just brought, so back to the deer population problem. I don't want to use the word call after visions of snipers in the night. What was proposed? Oh, was it? I'm not that familiar with it, so, okay. This is, I, so I moved here in December of two thousand and three, so I'm about on my twentieth anniversary, and deer have been a growing population since then with no end in sight, and it seems like we're, from my singular point of view, analysis paralysis. At some point, are we going to, if if obviously it's out of our purview, I think it's the board, but I believe they're they're not willing to act at this point. How does this get to a township vote or something of the sort? How do we? How do we light a fire under this?
Have the township board members get hit by deer a couple of times, and that'll.
We have a a member from the board who serves on this board.
But he brought, but that's the same person who brought brought forth the visions of snipers in the night with the homes close by. That sounds like the Ukraine war.
Exactly, is what was proposed, is guys that are dressed in black with night fishing scopes.
They used to. So I, but I think there's more than one way to slay a cat. Is that some like old saying or something like that? Like, I think there's more than one way to cull a deer rather than that vision.
Cascade Township by itself can't do it. The deer are transitory. They've already, Dr. Key's already laid that out. The deer, they're over by Kelvin College, are the same bucks that are over here. So they move all around.
Not if they're dead.
Not if they're dead. But it's not Cascade's responsibility to take care of a three or four county area of deer either.
No, but but we used to issue hunting permits for bow.
We do.
We still do, and so.
Why aren't we like advertising that and making?
It's on the website. We do issue, what was it?
I'll thin out the population.
We issued forty five permits last year in Burton.
We allow up to forty five.
Not one?
Madison?
Really? Zero harvest?
Zero harvest.
Not one deer was taken, not a forty?
Well, maybe we should expand it to your back, to our backyards, because I mean, I could hit three or four.
Well, again, so the township has no restrictions on hunting. Anyone can hunt in their backyard if it meets DNR requirements. So you can hunt, you know, anywhere, anywhere you're legally allowed to. Yeah, the township has no hunting restrictions. It's all all state based.
To hire a firm to come in and call, as you heard, pick your number, pick whatever, whatever way you want to do it.
Yeah.
It's not a one and done deal. You're looking at probably three, four hundred thousand dollars over a five to seven year period.
Yeah.
With no guarantees.
With what?
With no guarantees.
With no guarantees. You take the deer out, that's fresh habitat, other deer move in. So you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then you got fifty percent of the people love Bambi, the other fifty percent don't, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. And they have. Exactly. I'm also a master gardener. I've got Jeffersonian. I've got a lot more rare stuff than hostas.
Jeffersons?
Yes, Jeffersonian. I've got.
He's got California gold.
I don't have California gold. I've got, I've practically, I have a ginger, which some people view as California gold, but I've got lots of cool stuff, and I'm just I'm with that guy decimated, and my wife would be up here asking for an eight foot fence tomorrow if I wasn't married to her. I think that's going to happen to everybody at some point.
We're all gonna get our fair share. I got five large bucks in my backyard, but I don't have enough room to meet DNR code, so.
Yeah, what is that code? It's like three, two acres?
You gotta be four hundred and fifty feet away from a dwelling without, if you get inside there, you gotta have that person's permission.
Okay.
Is that bow hunting or?
Yeah, bow hunting.
Yeah, bow. Yeah. Any, any other business? I don't mean to.
No.
Yeah, I don't see it going anywhere.
No, I'm hearing that. The Farm Land Preservation Committee, is that, who's serving on that here? Is that going well?
Yeah.
No, but I was.
We'll bring in some outside speakers, I think, to chat with us here the next time around. Brian's arranging for us.
Excellent. When you, when do we think we'll get our first report, right? Scott's the chair, so I'm just asking you guys if you have any sense of that.
Think we could give a pretty good update, depending on this gentleman from the county's schedule. I'm hoping to get him in next week or two, and I think we'll give an update in October, I would.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
All right. Awesome. Any other business? We'll move to article twelve, acknowledge visitors and those wishing to speak. Don't do it, Scott. All right. Hearing none, we'll move to article thirteen, adjournment. I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Ringo, supported by Member Moxley. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.